This conference will now be recorded.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. The meeting is available by GoToMeetings as well. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approve the minutes of September 2nd meeting and claims. Everybody get a chance to look at the meeting minutes? All good? Claims?
I'm going to approve the minutes and claims.
Todd made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark, second. Any further discussion? Go call Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Todd. Motion passes. County attorney said he's going to be a few minutes late, so... We will skip him. Sure.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Really, I only have one thing for you. The 2017 Tahoe has been essentially decommissioned at the sheriff's office and it's ready to be sold and delivered to another agency within the county. County Conservation has expressed interest in it. There is an outstanding bill on a transmission that was put in one of our vehicles. One of the ideas was if County Conservation would end up with that, they would just go ahead and pay that bill and be on the sheriff's office. And it's about $2,900. And then return the transmission and a court charge of $1,000 back, so $1,900 bucks. So whatever you guys decide on that, it is ready and it's parked out back here, so... Mike wants to speak to maybe how it'd be used or... Yeah, it'd go for our outreach. The other two vehicles he's using right now are seasonal vehicles that we just use to put them in our fleet so we can have it type thing. Not a huge value in it, but might be here needs if you guys decide that's how you want to... Do you want a specific agenda item to do this, or do you want it just part of your discussion next week or something like that? But I think we can handle it that way. I don't need a specific agenda item.
How many miles were on that thing?
Oh, there's... I don't know. Two hundred and some thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't cost anything.
Yeah, no, no.
Really, that's all I have unless you have questions for me. I'll try and answer those. Jack Steinberg is here with our canine, so if you don't have any questions and we want to do that before the county attorney arrives, we can, or whatever you choose. Want me to bring Jack in? So canines, young canines are like young kids, alright? Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're... So keep that in mind. I'll let Jack in. So for those of you who don't know, Jack Steinberg, he's been with us almost 10 years now. He's been our handler the whole time. And so ask him any questions you might have during the presentation.
Hello. I'm asking you to do this. See me? He said, "I'm Jackson. I've almost been on 10 years." This is Xena. She is two years old now. I've had her since April. She believes she is here to work. So she is a German Shepherd, Belgian Malinois mix. She came from Poland, where she came from to my trainer. For training, we did a 200-hour training course, which is roughly a month long. And then we still train roughly 16 hours a month. And then we certify once a year. She certified, she's what called dual-purpose canine, so she's a bite dog and she is a narcotics dog. Also tracking with that. They call it apprehension in narcotics. So when it comes to apprehension side, no, she is trained to bite people if we need her to. When we train them to bite people, it's to try to inflict the least amount of damage possible to someone. It's not to go sit and bite like you see maybe someone's dog attack people. It's kind of the bite and hang on, so we can kind of get them custody. The apprehension side also is tracking. They're trained a little different. People probably watch movies where they present like a blanket to the dog and the dog goes to find them. A little bit different than how our dogs are trained. Our dogs are trained to go find any human odor. So the first human odor they come to, they will start going and following that odor until they find the end. They're also reading the makeup of the breakup of the ground, so the grass, footprints, stuff like that. They're all taking that information in. So when she works this toy in my hand, it's what she believes she's working for. So when she finds narcotics for me, she thinks she's just finding this toy. That's... David. That's... Yes. So narcotics, you know, all forms of narcotics, marijuana, methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine, MDMA, ecstasy, whether it's in a pill, a powder, a liquid, doesn't matter to the dog. The dog can pick it up. So you know, it's common for us to maybe now find some edible marijuana forms. The dog does not care if it's an edible form of candy. When a dog smells, thinking like when you're maybe making chicken noodle soup, you can walk in and go, "I smell chicken noodle soup." The dog actually picks up each individual ingredient inside the soup. So when you start mixing narcotics and stuff, the dog can actually go back in its memory and know, "Hey, that is the same thing that's in methamphetamine or say marijuana, for example." And it might be in a candy bar, it might be in a drink. They can pick that odor out specifically and be like, "Hey, that's marijuana right there." So that's how dogs are trained and how they can detect all their narcotics stuff. Her herself, she is super friendly, super social. It's one of the things we ask for in our dogs. But obviously, she is trained to bite people, so we've got to stay cautious and not let her have the opportunity if hostage arrives. At home, you can see this is much energy. It's just a lot of energy all the time. She's super great with my kids, super nice to my wife and me, but she could say something all day, every day and love it. As far as we've... Since we've had her, we've had success on the street finding narcotics. We've had one track that had her since April. Unfortunately, we didn't end up with that guy. She tracked pretty well for a while and then he hasn't looked getting away. So they're not perfect. They're not the end-all-be-all, but they are pretty good tools for us. When it comes to cost, she cost $15,000 when we got there. Thankfully, the people in the community raised most of that money for us. We've been very fortunate to have a lot of support in the community. We continue to get donations for her food, for vacation, for anything that she would need. Equipment. We're pretty set off in Mitchell County for taking care of her and everything she requires. So that being said, if anyone's pretty generic, anyone have questions? Anyone they'd like to know? Her favorite thing to do is jump up, and I don't know if she has a limit. The first day I got her, I was sitting next to my squad car and she jumps on the hood of my car to stay up there. I can fly trees on me where she gets 50 foot up in the air and she just has no limit for that. Yes?
I have a couple of questions. Does she have a protecting gear to wear?
Yes, she does have a ballistic vest. So when it comes to ballistic vests, they're great for our dogs and we know we're going to send them into a situation that they might need it. The problem with the vest, a dog can sweat, so it keeps them up. They can't wear it all the time like we can for humans because we will sit and sweat.
I have a second question?
Yes.
She's a lot of energy, which is great. How many years can she normally are able to continue to work for so?
Yeah, so obviously, it's dog-dependent. Our last dog, he worked, he will work just at seven years for us. So my first dog is retiring now. He lives with me. He is now basically a farm dog and he would not do this now. So the goal when we get our dogs is kind of always 10, age of 10 for the dog. Now her, she might do 12. Typically, when you talk breeds, the Belgian Malinois normally has a little longer working life than German Shepherds because German Shepherds have more health issues. But being she is a little bit of a mix, I'm hoping to get a little bit of a vest of both for us. Obviously, she looks a lot more like a German Shepherd than she does a Malinois. Malinois are typically small and she is a ginormous female. But when you see the athletic ability of her, that's where that comes in. So the German Shepherds typically have a little better mind, but they think through problems, problem solvers. A lot of people like that and that's kind of why you see a lot of them getting the extra. Any other questions?
Jack, have a question.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to just ask you something.
So with this special energy, she doesn't get to live in my house because she would destroy stuff. She is allowed around in my house if I let her in at times, but this one is a little different from my first one where she doesn't live inside my residence. So I'm pretty strict with my work dogs, right? Because we have to have a work relationship and it's not like a personal dog. I don't let her get away with a lot of stuff I don't like. So if she wants to chew on stuff, it's not allowed. If she doesn't want to listen, there's got to be some kind of catchphrase. So only because what she's trained in, you know, I always tell people, my dogs aren't trick dogs. They don't can roll over, change anything like that real cool. Everything they're trained for has to be... Also, if you want to be a canine handler, you'll never have a clean uniform ever. Anything else?
Been a couple of questions.
Yeah.
She has additional training. Do you have the champion of red pressure training that's daughter's career?
So 16 hours a month. And then we certify once a year. So there's always training going on. Now, like when I got her from Poland, when she gets to the United States, she doesn't know her name. I changed her name, actually. It wasn't Xena. I changed it to Xena, which means warrior princess. But she knew how to find her toy, search for her toy, and she knew how to bite people. That's it. So when we get them, they don't know how to sit, they don't know how to lay down, they don't know how to come. We start teaching them all that in our school. So obviously, there's a ton of ways to train a dog, right? But if you guys go home with your personal dogs and you tell your dog to sit, you have a treat in your hand, it does give it a treat, right? It's basically the same exact concept we use for all of our training. There's some type of reward for the dog after they do the task we ask. So narcotics, it's that ball. For tracking, she has a little tug, we play tug of war. Obviously, the humans themselves, when they're in the fight suit, that is the reward. Anything else?
And then she has two different collars on. Are they specific to anything?
Yeah, so really, she... You might see her with green and four. And yes, they actually communicate differently. When she's on this pink, well, it used to be red, but now it's pink, but it's fitting to be female. When she's on the pink collar, it's telling her she can kind of do whatever she wants. I'm not requiring her to be overly strict. She's that taller, it's thick and big, so she can actually pull them. So if we're searching for narcotics and she happens to smell a narcotic, it doesn't hurt the dog any when she pulls against that collar. It actually helps her because it creates a psychological effect in dogs. It's called opposition reflex where they want to pull harder and they'll pull, she can pull me to that odor. The second one, the orange one today, that's just her E-collar. Yep. I run E-collar on all my dogs, my personal dogs, the last dog I ran on them. They're a great tool. You know how to use them. That's just kind of like the long leash, right? So she could be however you, 100 yard away from me and I can still tell her, "Hey, I'm still here." Obviously, you can see her mind goes 24/7. It's kind of nuts. Every now and then she needs a little reminder of, "Hey, I asked you to do something and you didn't do it." And then you might see, they look scary. I know some people don't like them, but it's called pinch collars. You know what those are? They're all prongs. They're the best designed thing because what they do is they go around the dog's neck and they get equal distribution of pressure against the dog instead of just some choke chains. That puts all the collar pressure on the throat, not on it all the way around. So if a mom dog would correct a puppy, they nip them with their teeth. That's what that prong collar is designed to do. When she's hooked up to that one, that is requirement that you will behave. You will stay, if I tell you heel, it's a heel position. You're not running around like this being psychotic, slathering all over everything. You're just being a normal person. So it's a very clear communication. And they will know from when I hook up to this point to this point, the difference of what collar they're on. They understand that communication.
Well, we really appreciate you bringing her in today. It is 8:45. We have to start our public hearing, so...
No problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are now going into our public hearing ordinance 61. It is 8:45. I will open the public hearing. Any oral or written comments? Jim?
I had an email directed me that I need to support this process. And then I had an email from a local private utility, questioning why we're still moving forward with this. Then I had a discussion with an individual, also wondered why we are moving forward with this when things are not finalized at the state level in South Dakota, if that kind of thing. Those were my comments to me.
I had a few emails.
I had some emails and phone calls, just talking about the fact that the right-of-way ordinance is not a CO2 setback ordinance. That is more driven towards the safety issue and those are, a couple of those are being litigated in the legal system. And that to remind the public that the right-of-way ordinance is for private entities, not for public utility issues, as far as that's concerned. And I think we've talked at great length about the importance of protecting our county infrastructure and that the purpose of the right-of-way ordinance is just that.
I had calls also in support of the right-of-way ordinance. I've had support on both sides. Several that don't understand why we are doing this and some that are wanting me to vote for it, so...
Rachel, any in the office? No, I just had to sign the copies of it out. Okay. Any discussion amongst the board?
Just, I made it quite clear that I'm not supportive of it because I feel it conflicts with Iowa code and I have a number of other comments and I'm just not going to get into all that because I made it quite clear in the past, so...
I can appreciate that. I think that our legal counsel, Tim Whipple, clarified that the right-of-way is in full compliance with state and federal laws and there are no current issues, legal issues, places for a right-of-way ordinance.
Public comments?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the three supervisors that voted in favor of bringing this ordinance to a public hearing. I have not read the ordinance, so I don't know everything. And I asked this morning what that had to do as far as the pipeline and so on. And I know the pipeline would go under the right-of-way and so on. And, you know, I'm concerned about public safety. And I also think that when the board supervisors, I was on that for 24 years. And even though maybe there's a couple of people that don't like what it says, I think everybody needs to work for the betterment of everybody in the county, not just, you know, their personal opinion or their district. And I think when I looked at the federal guidelines as far as pipelines, and I'm just going to speak to that because pipelines would go under the right-of-way. And I just want to speak to the fact that the federal, those have not been promulgated yet after that big roll-up in Tassar's Mississippi. So I'm thinking of the public safety and everything, so I just want to thank the three. And I mean, this is, the summer pipeline is really and truly a private enterprise, not a public. So that's all I have to say, but I just wanted to express that and thank you to the three of you.
Thank you, Ben. Public comments?
I just have a few handouts because I'm touching a few things that we have talked about before, but I wanted to just maybe use some visuals to kind of explain kind of our side and where we're coming from.
I'll keep this kind of brief just because I know we've talked about a lot of the points that I would say in the past. So I just wanted to briefly review and kind of build on, oh, sorry. Brett Neese, project engineer with Southern Carbon Solutions. So like I said, I wanted to briefly review and build on what we've shared in the past. Similar to the ordinance that we're talking about today. The ordinance that we've discussed and everyone's aware of about in Shelby County did something very similar that required counties and companies to apply for a county permit, even after they would receive a state-level permit with the IUC. So the problem with this is that it creates the possibility of changing the pipeline route or stopping construction altogether, even when the IUC has already granted approval. So I know things that have been discussed in the past is that Eighth Circuit ruling and if that applies to what we're discussing today. So a big part of the Eighth Circuit ruling is that it was, one, appealed and defended, but it said that ordinances with setbacks are unlawful because local law makes it impossible to comply with state law, then the local law cannot be enforced. So the first handout is just an example of what we're kind of talking about where, you know, I know we've discussed this isn't an ordinance for setbacks for CO2 pipelines, but it does affect the siding of the pipeline itself. So you can see the first one is from our actual first permit, so it's not Mitchell County. It was one that was ruled on by the IUC where our route was south of a road right-of-way. And the IUC actually ordered us as part of the permit requirements to shift it north towards the actual road right-of-way itself. So if that county had actually had an ordinance like we're talking about today, basically, it wouldn't be enforceable just because of, we want to be within the actual setback distance that you guys have proposed. So situations where the IUC is actually routing us from different discussions, whether it's cultural, environmental, landowner preferences, and they actually order the siding of the pipeline itself. So you might want to say, "How could this be applicable to Mitchell County?" The second handout actually shows three multiple maps and these are locations within Mitchell County. It shows where there's possible problematic areas where routing can be difficult, if not impossible, with the different ingress, egress, call for, things like that. Where with a setback in place, like you guys are proposing today, anything, one, from our perspective, constructing is difficult, but any order from the IUC would actually conflict with what, I guess, would be something that we'd have to comply with. So kind of going back to that Eighth Circuit ruling, if the local law would conflict with the state law, it's not enforceable. So just wanted to highlight some of those areas so you guys could think about those during the discussions. Talking to our general counsel, we do believe that the Eighth Circuit ruling does apply to this ordinance. And I'll kind of end with, you know, our new leadership team and myself are looking forward to re-engaging with landowners along the active route, pulling out our new right-of-way agreements that reflect our updated strategy and help us develop a mutually beneficial route for all parties throughout the county. So I hope the board will keep these points in mind as you make your decisions today. Thank you.
So let me ask if I can this question. So you've highlighted some areas here where the right-of-way ordinance could be a challenge. We also have a waiver process that is part of that right-of-way ordinance. So we've made provisions because this isn't an IUC-driven ordinance. This is a right-of-way ordinance that we have full state and federal authority to enact.
I guess that's where we have a little confliction where I believe the Eighth Circuit ruling actually would preempt it, in our opinion. I understand there's some opinion there, but that's where I'm kind of saying we would follow the IUC. And even with a waiver process, the last example that I looked at allowed for different setbacks to be in place that aren't even written down today. It's kind of at the discretion of the board. So from a company's perspective, the ability to accurately plan for rules that aren't set in stone is where the issue complies. And you said there's a waiver process that isn't necessarily going to be guaranteed approval across the board. So you have the IUC that is going to say, "You should be routing here to get a permit." And then the county potentially saying, "No, you can't." That's where you have the confliction and the preemption for the ruling of the Eighth Circuit. Now summits, but you know, what has been tested in the courts.
Right, but you are not a public entity. You're a private entity. So it would be your duty then to come to us and say, "This route maybe may not work. What about, can we do this?" And that's why the waiver process is part of the right-of-way ordinance.
I would say state law requires this for an IUC permit.
You're talking zoning ordinance versus a right-of-way ordinance.
So as opposed to state law, is that required? But I guess that's, not for me, I'm not a lawyer.
Thank you.
She had a hand up first. Yeah. This right-of-way ordinance does not stop progress. It does make sure that progress comes, does not come at the expense of the county's existing infrastructure or the taxpayers who fund it. It will complement and reinforce existing state laws. It will not conflict with the current state laws. This ordinance will ensure that decisions affecting the county roads, ditches, and the easements which is owned by the county will be determined by the county, not a private industry. And we don't know what kind of future projects are going to be coming down the road, maybe 10 years. It's going to be something that we can't imagine is going to be happening right now. So we need to put, be proactive and put protections in place now. And so I encourage your support for the right-of-way ordinance and to ensure the protection of the county's investments, both now and in the future. Thank you. Rita, you have your hand up next.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Rita DeBorick and I live in Mitchell County near Riceville. This fall, I'd like to thank the board for giving us an opportunity to speak today. And I'm here because I support the right-of-way ordinance for the following reasons. I support well-written ordinances with state of guard rails and expectations before investors begin researching their options, no matter what land use projects are being researched. In starting ordinances, we need to start with something. Ordinances can be adjusted and updated as the need arises. It is harder to pull the reins in than loosen them. Without a right-of-way ordinance, we're crews that move from project to project may have the perception no one is watching, hence the perception no one cares. Since many of our rural roads have little to no daily public traffic. If I remember correctly, well, attending a previous supervisor meeting several years ago, the sheriff reported he was called to resolve a dispute between farmers trying to move their grain and the wind turbine crew blocking the road due to the work in progress. The ordinance was prepared by Tim Whipple, who has expertise with right-of-way ordinances. I consider this ordinance well-written. On a personal note, the county needs to be prepared for what is coming. Artificial intelligence appears to be the new frontier. The demand for electricity and I assume water will take, it will take power and to cool them beyond most of our comprehension. Most of all, roads are funded by taxpayer dollars. Therefore, the right-of-way ordinance is needed to protect our rights and need to apply to any and all private entities. And therefore, these are the reasons that I support the right-of-way ordinance. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rita. Kevin?
Kevin Strum, my wife and I have over four miles of road right-of-way on land that we own in West Cedar and Rock Township. We'd like thirds of the supervisor to support the road right-of-way ordinance to protect the investment that landowners and taxpayers have in these road right-of-way.
Any other public comments?
Online?
Hold on, Lisa. Okay. Go ahead, Lisa. They said you can go first.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Lisa Ritzert and I'm a Mitchell County landowner. Firstly, I'd like to express my appreciation for this democratic process and to all those who have participated in it. I'd like to clearly state that I support passing the right-of-way ordinance before the board today. board today, for the research and time behind it, the legal and engineering expertise that support it, and the growth management needs and structural and financial assets it helps to protect. Across the United States, land use and zoning regulation is generally viewed as an exclusively local government prerogative. Industries of all types and kinds are encroaching upon communities in an unprecedented manner. Rural areas traversed by transmission pipelines laid 25 to 50 years ago are now in the path of industrial expansion, areas with little or no development experience, without comprehensive development plans, or without adequate land use or zoning requirements. Managing extensive public risk has not been a consideration at the forefront, as it's not had to be. When and where regulatory clarity is lacking, enforcement is more difficult. An avoidance of action to prioritize business convenience cannot be considered a sound approach to managing risk, leaving way to open destruction on the very assets charged to protect. Land use and zoning ordinances are a commonality, a normalcy, across the United States to protect counties and their residents. Iowa counties hold land use and zoning authority. Please use that authority now in preparing Mitchell County for the future by voting yes on the right-of-way ordinance. Thank you.
Lisa? Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'd ask my guest first. Are we allowed to ask questions of the board members?
I don't have a problem.
I think you are more than.
You just did.
I'm not sure if they'll answer it.
I, my question really is, and maybe I'd ask to Mr. Ryan. Why would you not want private utilities to come under the requirements of a right-of-way ordinance?
Well, part of it is because the state and the federal are going to overrule us, and we have a right-of-way ordinance. And I'm kind of sitting here, you're, we've been saying it's not a CO2 pipeline ordinance, but I got this here that people are sending me that it's all about CO2 to vote for the right-of-way. I just feel like we have a right-of-way, and until something happens with summit, I don't think we need to waste taxpayers' money for attorneys.
I would note that my question has nothing to do with the CO2 pipeline. It had to do with private utilities or companies falling under our right-of-way ordinance. And I do not concur with you that we will necessarily be overridden by some other authority. There is no guarantee of that.
Any other public comments?
I just have one question, not to put you guys on the spot, but can someone verify the setback distance from intersections that's in the ordinance?
495 feet in each intersection.
Okay, so 495 feet. So just, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page that there are setbacks in the ordinance. So if our pipeline theoretically is 100 feet from an intersection right now, the ordinance would require us to move it 395 feet further away from that intersection. And the only place it can go is further into someone's field or onto someone's property. So I just want to make sure everybody knows and, and understands that.
Well, you could apply for a waiver.
Yes. I mean, there is the waiver option.
The waiver option is there.
But, you know, Brett mentioned the setbacks of argument in the Eighth Circuit.
Thank you.
Yes. Penny Morse, I want to thank you for allowing a public hearing on this ordinance. I support a right-of-way, not, but the right-of-way ordinance, it is not a setback ordinance. It's a right-of-way ordinance. It's not particularly just about a CO2 pipeline. As other people have said, it's about any infrastructure coming down the road in the future. And I don't think we should sit back and wait till something happens and then we decide to act. I think the board needs to be proactive and put some structures, some laws in place before whatever comes down the road happens so that, you know, it can always be changed and adjusted for whatever might be there in the future. But what we have right now, this is protecting our infrastructure, our right-of-way. It's not a setback ordinance, it's a right-of-way ordinance. And I heard that the lawyer had to say, and it's well-written, it will protect the taxpayers of Mitchell County and our right-of-way and our infrastructure. And I encourage you to vote in support of this ordinance.
Any other public comments? All right, I'm not seeing any. I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:05.
I'm gonna.
We're going to go back to, or, sorry.
Are you going to consider this now?
I think we missed Department Head, so I didn't know.
Okay. Just because if, when it comes back to this, I just want to make sure the proceedings get followed, so.
Or do we follow?
I think he's talking about the agenda item seven. I don't think he's talking about, are you talking about agenda item seven, or are you talking about your, your county attorney agenda item?
No, I'm just talking about if it comes to consideration of this right-of-way ordinance.
That's number eight.
I just, hour ago, I want the process to follow. So when you come to that.
Yep, so no, we skipped Department Head, and we were not here, so I didn't know if you had anything.
I know.
Okay. So if that's okay, we'll go back to Department Head and finish that, and then we'll move on. Okay. Department Head discussion, Rachel and I forgot to put Dave's issue on the agenda. I apologize for that, but I think we can have just a little discussion where she's going to probably have a budget amendment coming up, and we could pull money out of the capital improvements that we set aside this year, and that if Dave would go out and do, get some bids to see how, like, see how much it's going to cost to fix.
That's the pillars you're talking.
Yeah, sorry. Clarify the calls.
Sounds on the north.
Yeah. So is everyone okay with that? Ask Dave to go out and get some bids, and then we can do a budget amendment at the time that Rachel needs to and pull out of that capital improvements.
I'm good with that.
Yes, okay. I just wanted yes from everyone. So Jim, yes. I, yes. Cam, yes.
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Yes? Todd, yes. Okay. We will have Dave work on that. And I, again, apologize, that was not on the agenda today. All right. Any other Department Head?
I just wanted to mention, I, Ryan IT, we just talked briefly in regards to trying to improve, rather than have that screen come down with projector, try to improve what we do for meetings when we have a Zoom meeting with somebody else or for the public that's here. And one of the thoughts is to put two different monitors in here. One would replace, if you're fairly large, it would replace that whiteboard that's there, it'd be hanging there. So people kind of from this area would be able to see that, and another one would be up there, kind of in the corner, wouldn't be as big as that one, but then people from over there would be able to see that. Plus, board members would have to be moving all around with their presentations because you'd actually be able to see what's going on. So there's not been any quotes or anything, but I just wanted to bring that up, that the board's interested in something like that, that's likely something we need to do in the future.
You have Department?
I do.
Okay.
So just to let you know, probably this is our last week for motorcycle drives test because the course has to be clear of any debris or water or anything, so that will be shutting down at the end of this week. And then also, I wanted to give those to public help as a part of the department. Whenever I got my flu shot, my mom was out in Florida, the accounting bureau, they did a great job, so I just wanted them. But right now, the flu shots walk in, but if you can't come in, they will accommodate you.
We're good.
Rachel, any Department? No? Good.
I have one.
Oh, sorry.
That was brought to my attention, there's an article in the World Set a couple weeks ago about that childcare, the state is not funding that on any line.
So we only got one grant from the state. We already got those funds, and so we already got our state grant. There was never any guarantee that we were going to get any more funds from the state.
So we have enough money to do the $2 wage?
We do for this next fiscal year and then I have funds for like the next year, but I also need to look at getting more funds.
I see. Five counties that were listed that were in that program, and the governor's not funding that this year. Supposedly, but she hasn't.
The governor, they never committed to giving us funds. Like, they talked about potentially having like another, like they created a statewide solutions funds, which that allows businesses to give directly to the state. So funds are not being, businesses are not giving to that fund, so there's really no activity on that, so. So again, I mean, there was no guarantee that we were going to get any more funds from the state. We thought we might, but we're, at this time, unless something changes, we are not. So I guess I have some ideas to help address that. We do have funds for about a year, and then a half, a year, and then a half. So for that to be sustainable, yes, we need to get some more funds for that.
That's all I said.
Okay.
Just a minute, I just wanted to ask a question. Initially, there were those of us that gave too, you know? And we were told that it would be up to three years that they would be able to fund that. So I was suspecting that there would be money, you know, from wherever besides what we gave, but there is money then to fund those for three years like we originally.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. We will move on to county engineer update.
Morning.
Good morning.
Couple of updates. I know there's some people asking about the McIntyre Bridge progress, and looking by the schedule, it's, although they're on schedule about halfway through their schedule currently, they're working on decking the cell half and putting rip rap on the north, getting the rip rap down before they put decking on so they can get their equipment out there. So it's progressing, and according to schedule, it's really close to where they had predicted they would be, so that's a good thing. I think the deadline they had, or they, based on working days with no weather, was still November, yeah. So I'm not quite sure if they feel they can speed things up or not, but that's where that's at right now. A few weeks ago, we talked about the BIP grant, the bridge, getting the grant for that. We had a meeting last week, the group of us that had bridges in it with the, with the committees and everything else, and based on the timeline and trying to get a consultant and the costs and the percentage we thought we'd have a chance of getting it, we decided it wasn't something to pursue because we had already gotten so many grants that we feel that there's other states out there that'll probably get priority before us. And the timeline was just too tight to try to get something put together. So we're going to try to take those bridges. We all decided that if we get other CHBP grant, we would try to put those bridges into those, into that grant when it comes through again, if it comes through again. So also, we were, we're going to try to get some paving done today, but with railroad stuff and everything else, I've got to get the contract signed, which we have here for the, the local asphalt paving. They were going to try to work for Worth County to come here, but we don't figure it stuff ironed out yet, so they're going to be, they're going to go to another county first and come back over here so we can get some stuff figured out here. So on the agenda, we have the contracts for Yulin Brothers. I know we awarded the project, but it's now just a matter of getting the contract signed for the project so they can continue on with construction. One thing we're considering, even though we don't have the contract signed yet, we awarded the project, we talked about maybe even trying to close River Lane, River Road full width just so they can get through there. We wouldn't have a centerline joint in there. We did that when we did some patching, but we'll talk the contract a little bit more and see if we can consider that or not. So I know with, with the west side of O6 tore up, people do use River Road a little bit, so, not that they can't find a different way around, but, so I do have the contracts for Yulin Brothers to, contracts and bond, it's just a matter of getting them signed, so we have the official documents in our files.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark, a second? Any further discussion?
Roll call time.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Cam?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
No, we could, in the future, we can do local projects. We could do it on the resolution like we do when we do the state stuff and have, you guys allow me to sign that stuff so we don't have to come back here and do that. So it's something that we can talk about next time we do local, local lettings and things like that. It might be a little bit more efficient for us to get that done that way, so.
And you've talked about it before.
Question on the project, so they're going to a different county, they're not going to be coming back here, and we're going to delay in asphalt in colder weather, aren't we?
I don't think so. I mean, depending on how colder we get.
Well, as far as spec book is concerned.
Right.
Forty degrees, that type of thing, so.
Hopefully, we're not having a good night. I think they were going to go from here to Winnebago County, but now they're going to go to Winnebago and probably come back here, so.
Really?
Yeah. Hopefully, these projects are pretty quick for them.
Okay.
That's all I have for you this morning.
Zoom down.
Yeah.
Hit the lever.
Oh, God. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. All right, I think we're all up to date now, so now it is number eight, first consideration of ordinance 61 entitled an ordinance enacting a new right-of-way control ordinance to regulate certain occupancies and uses of county right-of-way. All right. I don't need to read this. What were you going to say?
Well, I'm not telling anybody what they do, what they ought to do, but I, if you are, if somebody has expressed interest before in waiving the multiple readings, you don't have to, you can have the multiple readings, which means if you do it today, and then you do it again a couple more times. I'm not here to tell you how to do it, I'm just going to tell you, if somebody were to say, well, let's just waive the multiple readings to get on with it, there's, I prepared a resolution just because I didn't know whether we go this, what, you know, what you wanted to do. So if somebody wants to waive multiple readings, then somebody needs to introduce the motion, move for it, have a discussion, vote on it before you go any further. Otherwise, you just have the, you do it like, you know, you just have your multiple readings. You consider it, discuss it, vote on it, but nothing gets passed, okay? So I don't know how you want to do it, but if somebody wants to waive multiple readings, it might be best to have somebody read what the resolution would be. I can do that, and then somebody move for it, discuss it, or you don't have to. I don't.
I don't want to waive the multiple readings. Waive the readings if there's something that's not a hot topic. I mean, board is pretty much, it's just an easy item, so to speak. This is not an easy item, and this is a hot topic, so I think you need to follow code in regards to have a first, second, and third consideration. That's my thought.
So I, I believe that, yes, it's been a hot topic, and it's been a, an item of business that we have discussed at great length and had several people come in their interest of county government. And I don't know that we, we have any easy items on this board. And so I, I believe that at this point, we, we should waive the multiple readings.
Would agree with waiving the second, third reading?
Be the first and second reading because the third one is the one that you actually consider out, so it's first and second reading.
I disagree with that because I think we should do all three because several months ago, it was voted a different way, three, two or three times, brought back. Now it's being talked about again. I think we should do all the readings. That's my thought.
So I'd like to make that motion. So do you want to read that, and I will so move that?
Well, I'm just going Well, I'm just going to read what the resolution would be.
We need, we need a second if we're going to.
A second.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that's fine. I was going to read it and then Pam was going to move for it again, and then there was going to be a second. But I don't really matter either way. All right, ready?
Yes.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Pritch County, Iowa, that the provision slash requirements of Iowa Code Section 331.302, Subparagraph 6, relating to multiple considerations and votes on the ordinance, votes on the proposed ordinance, I hereby waive as they pertain to the proposed ordinance entitled, you know, I got to get my glasses, right? Not quite used to having to do this all the time, having to put glasses on to read, come there. Okay. We're just going to start where I left off. Relating to multiple considerations and votes on the proposed ordinance are hereby waived as they pertain to the proposed ordinance entitled an ordinance enacting a new right-of-way control ordinance to regulate certain occupancies and uses of controlled right-of-way and referred to ordinance number?
Sixty-one.
Okay, because I had a blank there. Okay, that would be the resolution. So I guess there's a bit, there's been a motion and a second already. You know, actually, we don't have to do that again.
Okay, sorry.
But you do have to have.
Seconded.
But you do have to have the discussion and vote so forth. Has to pass by a majority of the board, the way multiple readings. I think for city legislation, it has to be like eighty-five percent or eighty percent or something like that. But for county legislation, it's majority of the board, so.
Rachel, did you say that's twelve fifty?
Thirteen fifteen. Thirteen fifteen.
All right. Pam made a motion. Mark made a second. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Sidney.
No.
Todd.
No.
Pam.
Aye.
Tim.
No.
Mark.
Yes.
Did not pass. Now we can go back.
Yeah, now what you would do is you're up for, we're just going to do the first reading.
Yep.
And you've done that before. You don't have to read the whole ordinance or anything. You just introduce it by title, right? And say, now we're going to consider, one, you can read the title, I can, but it doesn't have to be me. And then there's a I'm not going to tell you what to do, but if somebody, then there can be a motion and then second, discussion, then there's a vote. But nothing becomes a resolve. It's just you take the vote.
Correct.
Now, I do want to remind people, though, that if so under the statute, it has to be passed unless you waive multiple readings and that failed. But it has to be passed three times, right? First, second, third. So if it doesn't pass here, that's done, which, I mean, it can come up again. It just means that you don't then move on to the second reading because first didn't pass. Does that make any sense?
Yes, thank you.
Anyway, that's all I have. I'll shut up. If you have a question, want me to read something, well, otherwise, I'll leave it to you. I mean, I'll be here.
Pam, you like reading?
You like reading.
So I need to just the, the resolution part or the, okay, so I move to approve the first consideration of ordinance sixty-one entitled an ordinance enacting a new right-of-way control ordinance to regulate certain occupancies and uses of county right-of-way.
Pam made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Roll call, Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
No.
Todd.
No.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will put it again on the agenda next week to read the second.
And then we have to put the third reading on the following week. Is that right? Did I understand that right? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning.
Approve treasures report.
All right. For the August twenty-five treasures report, motor vehicles paid in state was one hundred ninety-three thousand three forty-one sixty-nine. Motor vehicles general basic was twelve thirty-nine twenty-six, postage was eight twenty-two. Driver's license was seventeen oh eight. We issued two hundred and forty-four driver's licenses last month. Seven of those were out of count. That's average, right? That's what we do. Organ donors in state was eight hundred, one hundred and eight dollars and nineteen cents. And then new registration paid to state was one eighty-six, six thirty-nine, eighty-seven. New registration to the county general basic was two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and five cents. So the total motor vehicle driver's license collections for the whole month was three hundred and ninety-seven, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, six cents. Of that, Mitchell County retained seventeen thousand two seventy-eight thirty-one. Property taxes collected last month, we collected five million six hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. That is way ahead of schedule. We're at forty-six point seven six percent collected already. The windmills paid early, which I took their money. I was happy to get it, so. Penalties was one hundred and thirty-two. That was just some that didn't go on tax sale. Motor, mobile homes got paid that were delinquents, so those don't go on, don't get sold on tax sale usually. Special assessments was seven hundred, seven thousand three hundred and seventy-seven eighty-nine. We did have eleven tax sale certificates redeemed for seven thousand six twenty-four. And prepaid taxes or futures was two hundred and seventy-nine twelve. That's just pretty much mathematical errors primarily. And we do not refund that type of, especially when it's businesses or farmers and stuff because they've done their taxes and claimed it, then I don't want to give them money back when they have a receipt for what they paid. We just put towards futures. Interest on investments was eighty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and four cents. That's about thirty thousand higher than average just because we had four CDs that were cash this month, so. That's why it kind of jumped up. And then this latest receipts from county departments process, so it was a hundred and nine for one million one hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars and forty-nine cents. So the total revenue processed in our office last month was seven million three hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve? Todd made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? Sorry, any further discussion?
Roll call, Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Motion down? Thank you.
Thank you.
Me too. Okay, moving on to number ten, discussion and possible action on contract for services for Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition. Looks like we have a resolution here. So this would be thirteen fifteen, right?
Yep, thirteen fifteen.
Thirteen fifteen twenty-five, this contract for services agreement made between the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors and Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition, in fact, as of September ninth, twenty twenty-five, whereas the Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition has requested fifteen hundred in funding from the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors. This funding request will be used red ribbon week for substance abuse awareness programs in Mitchell County schools. Is there a motion to approve resolution thirteen fifteen dash twenty-five?
I move to approve resolution thirteen fifteen twenty-five to secure the funds for red ribbon week for the Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition.
Pam made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark a second. Any further discussion?
Can this come out of the opioid?
This comes out of the opioid fund.
Roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, just have a little confusion. I just need to be clarified here. The resolution we did for the consideration, what was that ordinance number?
Ordinance sixty-one.
The consideration, that was, what, did we do that through a resolution or?
So it didn't pass.
There was just a resolution if you waived the two readings.
But the consideration was not a resolution, okay?
Yep.
That's right.
That's when we do it at the, we do it the third reading.
Okay. Perfect.
Right?
Thank you.
Don't confuse me now. I always want to think of the same thing for a minute, so.
Okay, we're good. All right, number eleven, discussion and possible action on resolution to exit Central Iowa Juvenile Detention. So that would be?
Thirteen sixteen dash twenty-five.
Is that right? Yeah, thirteen sixteen dash twenty-five. We touched on this over the last?
Last week, right. Since I'm on that board, I can
Go ahead.
make that motion that we approve.
You want to read the resolution?
I certainly will. Whereas Mitchell County is a stakeholder in the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center and whereas the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center is the respondent. In Harden County case, CBCV ten two two four seven, whereby Harden County calls into question the validity of prior twenty-eight E agreements. And whereas the outcome of that litigation is uncertain and Mitchell County has interest in the outcome of that litigation. And whereas C I J D C Commission has voted twenty-two to five to approve the attached compromise settlement agreement resolving the litigation. And whereas the compromise settlement agreement is a compromise between Harden County and the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center that acknowledges the membership of counties joining the C I J D C through two thousand and twelve and also allows remaining counties to maintain certain benefits that the litigation does not otherwise guarantee, while also allowing the counties joining through two thousand and twelve to adopt a new twenty-eight E agreement and even vote to allow the remaining counties to regain full membership in the C I J D C. And whereas the parties will file with the court a consent decree memorializing the full terms and conditions of the party's compromise settlement agreement following approval of the compromise settlement by a majority of the member counties. Therefore, the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors hereby approve and adopt the attached compromise agreement and authorize the C I J D C to execute and present to the court a consent decree consistent with the attached compromise settlement.
All right, Pam made a motion for resolution thirteen sixteen dash twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Aye, Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is that the outdoor facility?
Yes, yeah, they're just clearing up some twenty-eight E agreements and memberships. So now we'll have to, in the future, follow up with the resolution to rejoin.
All right, approve fiscal year twenty-five annual urban renewal report.
Hopefully, the last confusing one because we combined it to our one area versus having like the six that are listed here. But the front of the sheet here, it shows the tip debt outstanding, nineteen million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand two eighteen. After fiscal year twenty-five, there's a balance of thirteen thousand seven oh one one sixty-one. Beginning cash balance was seven hundred and six thousand eight seventy-six and the ending was eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine thirty-two. If anyone needs, I don't want to say proof, all the numbers on the front here match all of our expenses and revenues then throughout the fiscal year.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve fiscal year twenty-five annual urban renewal report?
Move to approve.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I just, go ahead, Todd.
I'll say.
Todd, second. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number thirteen, approve recorder's report for August of seven thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve recorder's report?
I made a motion.
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam, second. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on appointing planning and zoning board of adjustment member.
I had Rachel put that on. I had an individual contact me that she was, she was willing to do it. She lives over in the Crafton area in Mitchell County. And she was going to be here today, but she had another commitment, so she could not, so. Does anybody else have anybody in mind? I'll say, I'll say her name. It's Lori Tash. Sure. She'd be a good one. So I will give Amanda her contact. Ever get ahold of her?
We've got to make a motion for that. Todd?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'll move to make a motion to appoint Lori, Lori Tash.
All right, Todd made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark, second. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Motion passes. Items of note, meeting attended.
I had a NIACO meeting last night as far as the executive committee, just went over the financials and set a publication, globe gazette as the publication for, for them. Then we had a regular board meeting. Guess the main focus of that was Iowa Public Information Board. The individual that represents that was online and he went over what's called Iowa Sunshine Laws. And that is on the NIACO website and it has to do with the training that is going to be required for the new elected officials for open meetings and, and public records. Even over the open meetings segment of it, it was probably, I don't know, thirty to forty-five minutes long. And I asked, I asked, well, is this the training? And he said, no, no, that is not the training and the training is offered, but other entities and the other entities can't use the IPIB. IPIB can't do the, generate the documents and the PowerPoint for them. These other entities have to do it themselves. And it's kind of like, well, what's the purpose of Iowa Information Board? If you can't have them do that for you, it's just kind of, it's another legislative thing, I'll just say. Anyway, so that's, we had that last night and that was kind of the big thing. One of the let's see here. One of the things he did say, and we do it, and I'm not totally objecting to it, but it is a comment that he said. And it has to do with is a comment that he said, and it has to do with public comments, and the statement was, you can't take a public comment and turn it into a discussion item, meaning if there's a public comment, it can't all of a sudden turn into a discussion item between the board and the public, because that's what an agenda item is, and you should have an agenda item if you're going to be discussing something. So he said, use caution if that happens, don't, don't escalate a public comment into a discussion topic.
Unless it's in a public hearing.
Public hearings different, yes. Yep.
Just so that's clear.
Yep, no, that's, that's right. That's all I had.
I have all my meetings this month, so I'm not.
Okay, all right. Well, I had a public board of health meeting, and we went over the, the budget, and what they used in fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five was about eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars of county funds. They rely heavily on grants, they've got several grants that they've received, and they're always working on more. They also are working on possibly getting grant money to see about funding some additional radon tests for people. They have just been flying off the shelf over there, and so several people are interested in, in assuring that. We talked about the great job that they did with the, the flu clinics, and they're trying to get the word out, so that, you know, they have several sites and several times, and they have a great website out there where they post that as well. They've got some flags and flyers around, and now is kind of their busy season for that, as far as that's concerned. On the environmental health side, we approved a nuisance policy to kind of, the purpose of it is to maintain consistent practices when dealing with nuisance issues, and to exercise the power of the board of health to help enforce challenges that, that come across on the environmental health side. And that was a recommendation that was sent to us from, from the people in the, the DNR and the, and the environmental health side, so that was something that, that they felt pretty good about putting in place as additional support for our environmental health director, Amanda. So other than that, watch for your flu clinics and, and lots of activities on the board of health side. I also attended a telephone training session for the new phone system to go, which will get kicked off at the board of, or the public health building this week on Thursday. And so I was on with Ryan and Laura and Jess Kittleson, and he talked about the various steps in kicking that program off, so they'll have their new phones in place Thursday morning, and that should facilitate a much more streamlined communication system for, for those folks. And then, when that's up and working well, our phones, I believe, are here, and they will move on to the courthouse and the engineer's office on that project. Long, long process, so hopefully all will go well there.
I just had a council of service meeting, and there's only the three employees left, and they're just paying bills that were previously before July first, and they're still trickling in, but they want to cut it off by October first. The state wants their balance, their money back, that's turning into a mess. Pushing through it.
I attended Mitchell City Council meeting, and I also had a fair board meeting. Basically, we're just starting, again, the entertainment, or the carnival wants to come The food vendors want to come back. Got several on-ground entertainment that they want to come back. Lot of talk on grandstand. What goes on inside the grandstands on the four days, there's some other entities that would like to come. So we're just early discussion. Sunday morning, Easy Rider's breakfast, they ran out of food, they want to come back. And just pretty much, just early stages of next year's fair, and the dates are July twenty-eighth through August second, I believe. That was it.
Public comments?
Yes, Rita?
I have a couple of questions, Pam. Could you give us examples when, in that, when you talked about nuisances, what are some examples?
So, so the, the purpose of, of this policy is to kind of provide some administrative authority for our Mitchell County Environmental Health Specialist. And so a nuisance means any act, failure to act or condition which may cause danger or detriment to life, health, or related safety. It's whatever is injurious to health or reasonably, unreasonably offenses of the senses. So in, in practicality, what we've experienced is, which is not unlike any other county from what we're, we're discovering, is that, you know, you might have someone that moves into a, a new place, and a new sewer system has to be put in. And, and in some situations, one of the DNR individuals stated, you know, the sewer system may be worth more than the, the trailer home that, you know, that they're needing to, to do this for, or whatever. And so as a board of health, we wanted to find ways that we could help support Amanda in her endeavors. She does a great job as far as she reaches out to them and lets them know, you know, you have to put this in, and then she, if they say, well, I don't have the funds, she helps them, you know, facilitate some, some, there's some loan programs out there that are available, and so she works with them on that. Otherwise, she may try to help them facilitate a loan with their local bank so that they can get that put in. Some other counties have told us that they have a fund, I don't know how much they keep in there, depends on the county, where if all of the avenues have been exhausted, then they can apply to get some assistance, similar to what we have general assistance, we have a general assistance fund. But, so that would be something that maybe at some point in the future, we may need to consider. But so far, I believe that, you know, just having this policy in place kind of allows her to, to have a little more support, and for us to show support to her, for facilitating that those things get taken care of, in as timely a manner as we possibly can.
And Mark, I have a question for you. When you talked about social services, they're down to three employees, does that mean social services are being cut, or are they being redirected?
They were redirected. These are the employees from, whatever, four. They need two people to sign checks, so they kept three on just to make sure everything is transparent, I guess. And they're going to go till probably December thirtieth, they hopefully be done, and close out those three people.
So where, where are social services being done then, after that?
That's over public health, they have a iPad, is it over there that they?
So we were really fortunate in that the public health team filled out several forms to, to try to get one of their facilitators in Mitchell County. And so they have been working diligently to get someone from both sides of the prior county social services system, and so they have some updates coming down the road, but the Iowa Public Health and Health and Human Services are discussing how they're going to work through this, but as local providers and lead entities, and so it'll be similar to our emergency preparedness situation, where we have, you know, some local help, and then we work with others outside. And some of that is still being determined, but, and then our general assistance is being handled in the public health office.
Rita, are you aware of this, how the state reorganized the county?
I, no, I'm not.
Okay, so that's how, that's what's happened. The state, it used to be county social services, we had regions within the state, and the state completely overhauled that and turned it into districts, and defunded it quite considerably compared to what it used to be. So the presence that we had in Mitchell County is gone, as far as what we used to have. Those ladies lost their job, and now the state is, is doing it through an ASO type thing, and there's, there will be what's called access points. We were lucky enough to become an access point, but not every location that was served before is going to be an access point. So an access point is where somebody comes here, like what we had as a full-time presence, comes here and helps with mental health individuals, and provides some of the services that we used to have. But it was a completely major overhaul, and it was, the state did not think it out very well as far as how it was going to be implemented, and there were multiple questions even right down to the July first deadline. That's kind of what Mark was talking about. Bill still needed to be paid from what happened prior to July first, so that's what has been taking place.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
We were, there's twelve counties in our district, and now ASO took over it statewide, so there's only one for the whole state. It's.
Okay, but I will say that our, our local public health, they have WIC providers coming in here in the near future, and they will be on-site a certain day of every week, and so we're, they did a really good job of, of getting us some, some local support to, to handle some of those issues, and, and, yeah, it's one of those things that was out of our control for the most part.
Any more public?
It's Laura has commented. Laura, can barely hear you.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just speak a little bit about who is in our building that's kind of helping with some of those services. CICS, Angela Rodamaker is a service coordinator with CICS, and she comes once a week to our building to meet with people face to face, but with talking to her, it sounds like she comes to Mitchell County quite often throughout the week to go to people's homes and helps them with things like Medicaid applications, maybe SNAP applications, disability service assistance, a lot of, or any other assistance services. We are working with Iowa Primary Care Association to hopefully have somebody here once a week to provide with the behavioral, like a system navigator to come help with some things as well. That's not in place right now, but for now, you can reach out to them through the provider number, if there's numbers, you can call for a system navigator. But hopefully we'll work on that so they can come here face to face.
Thank you, Laura. Any other public comments?
Pre-usual questions on process. So when it comes to the right-of-way ordinance, the second reading will take place next week on September sixteenth, and the third reading will take place on the twenty-third. Are these readings the same as public hearings?
No.
Today was the only public hearing.
So there will be no public comment in the next two meetings?
No.
Okay. And my last question is, the vote that you take on the third reading, is that going to be the vote whether or not to adopt this ordinance?
Yes, as long as all three readings get passed, then it will be passed, but if it does not pass that last time, it will not be passed.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seen none, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at nine fifty-five.